Good evening and welcome to this Town Meeting Presentation Night. It is coming to you live on Monday, October 3 at 6:00 p.m. I'm Steve Trufletti, Plymouth Town Moderator. I'm joined in studio at PAC TV with Nicole Manfredi, the Assistant Town Moderator, and Julie Thompson. She's the Executive Director for PAC TV and she is the Floor Manager this evening along with her staff. We'd like to thank them for their support throughout this evening and throughout the preparation and planning for Town Meeting. Tonight's Town Meeting Presentation Night is live only on the PAC TV Prime Channel and at pactv.org/live. The Presentation Night will be available online soon at the PAC TV Video Share Channel on YouTube with replays to be announced soon for Channels Comcast 15, Verizon 47. The October 6 Town Meeting Preview this Thursday will be live at 6:00 p.m. on Comcast 15 and Verizon 47 and online at the PAC TV Prime Channel at pactv.org/live and on YouTube at pactv.org用水. Replays of the Presentation Night and the Preview Night will be announced at the PAC TV website, which is pactv.org/plymouth-town-meeting. Town Meeting will also be live on Saturday, October 15 at 8:00 a.m. on Comcast Channel 15, Verizon Channel 47, and online at the PAC TV Prime Channel at pactv.org/live. This evening, we are joined with panelists. We have nine presentations for the articles for Town Meeting. We have a panel that are available also to answer questions. The purpose this evening is to present information to Town Meeting that's distinguished from the preview on Thursday night, which will review the motions coming from before Town Meeting and various procedural matters that will be considering. Town Meeting will be in-person. It'll be at Plymouth North High School. And at this point, I'd like to welcome again our Assistant Town Moderator, Nicole Manfredi, with her opening remarks. Nicole, good evening.
Evening. Tonight's presentation format will look a little bit different. In the past, you were asked to not use the hand raise feature and to hold questions for the moderator and use the V-Voter system for that purpose. Since we are not using V-Voter for this Fall Town Meeting, there's been a shift in procedures for this evening. If you wish to communicate with a moderator, you will use the hand raise feature. After you do so, you can type in your question in the chat. I'll be monitoring the chat and we'll read the questions publicly as they come in and the moderator will address them. Please be patient. Since we have shifted to the in-person model, we will be utilizing the clickers on the day of Town Meeting. That morning, I will do a brief tutorial, but we are confident that all will go smoothly.
Thank you, and that is Assistant Town Moderator Nicole Manfredi. She will be joined on the day of Town Meeting with a second Assistant Town Moderator who will be presiding in the mask-only room. Many of you may have heard that we will have three rooms at Plymouth North High School. The Center for Performing Arts will be available for Town Meeting members, and we welcome the Select Board, the Advisory and Finance Committee, and Department Head staff. And in addition, there will be a mask-only room for Town Meeting members. That will be the Band Room, and that'll be with the second Assistant Town Moderator, who will communicate to Nicole Manfredi as to anyone who wishes to speak. And also, in the third room in the library for the public, will be joined by our new Assistant Town Clerk, Elvira Galliano, and she will be there communicating to us via Nicole Manfredi in order that we may also bring in through the video live feed and the audio live feed, anyone in the library who may wish to be heard at Town Meeting. At this point, I'd like to again remind Town Meeting members, you have the book, Report and Recommendations of the Advisory and Finance Committee, presented by our Advisory and Finance Committee. The Chair, Kevin Canty, is here this evening to answer any questions. We're going to go right to the presentations, and we're going to go chronologically in the order in which they show on the warrant. The first is Article 8. It is the acquisition of land, and we welcome our Plymouth Fire Chief Neil Foley on this video.
My name is Chief Neil Foley with the Plymouth Fire Department, and I'm here to discuss with you Article 8, which is the Fall Town Meeting article that is the authorization for the Select Board to spend $90,000 on behalf of the town to enter into an agreement with the butter of the Manhamet Fire Station. This is to acquire the purchase rights through the renderings that I'm about to show you. Last April 2022, funds were authorized to do a substantial renovation of the Manhamet Fire Station. We knew then that the land that was existing for the Manhamet Fire Station wasn't going to be able to accommodate the large addition that was going to be needed. Through that, we've worked with our design and engineering team to figure out what we needed at a minimum. And recently, over the summer, we've been able to get those results back. And I'd like to show you through some slides the existing property and also what the renderings of the addition and the requirements that we're going to need and to expand the lot of the Manhamet Fire Station. So the first slide that I'd like to show you, you can see the red building kind of to the left of the screen, and then to the right of that, you'll see a retention pond, and I'll get into that a little bit later. Left of the building, you'll see the existing driveway that we use to access behind the fire station where we have a response bay for apparatus. And also, it's the parking area for the employees that work out of that station, including paramedics. That particular station, we have Engine 5, Ladder 2, and also Brewster Ambulance 5 is housed. So with the addition that is being designed by our architects, I'll go to Slide 2. You can see now that where that driveway was on the left side of the building is where that substantial addition is that I discussed earlier. In the middle is a little bit more of a detailed drawing. It's difficult to see, but the black lines represent the existing lot lines that are on that property as it is now. To the right of the building is what we're proposing to be a new driveway that needs to be constructed. We're going to be adding two additional response bays in the rear of that station, and we're still going to have our employee parking in the rear. So having that building on the left side, that addition, is going to require us to move that driveway over to the right side, as you can see there. And the right side represents the north side of the Manhamet Fire Station. The road up front is obviously State Road. The red boundary really shows in that far right of this slide, the constraints of that site. We had to put the addition on the other side due to mechanical and services that already enter into the building on the north side. So there really was no other option other than to work with this configuration that we have here. The next slide, you'll see Lot D. That's the existing lot. This is in a different aspect, so you'll have to see that State Road is on the right now out front. But the proposed acquisition of land is that Prop Lot, and there's that retention pond that I spoke about earlier. The engineers really feel that this is going to be an advantage for us to purchase this lot, not only for the driveway, but for engineering, the drainage and permeable space, and really gives us a lot of flexibility during construction, and also a lot of flexibility into the future, too. If we've learned anything through the process of the different buildings that we've done within the Fire Department is that the flexibility really is something that really wasn't planned for when purchasing and building some of these fire stations. And the lot constraints really constrain us from a lot of different options that we might be afforded should we have a little bit extra land. So there's several advantages of us purchasing this land. One is that driveway. The other is the access to that retention pond and also to engineering and maintenance of that retention pond and the drainage that we can use from it. The funding for this acquisition was already authorized through the April 22 Spring Town Meeting. So no additional funds will be required as part of this article, and I really appreciate the support. Thank you.
Thank you, and that was Neil Foley. He is the Plymouth Fire Chief, and he's certainly available to answer more questions from anyone who may have them. Again, on Thursday, we will go through every article and review every motion tonight. We are going through only those articles on which we've received presentations. I'd like to also announce that on Wednesday at 7:45 in the morning, I'll be having a virtual motions meeting with Town Council. And so I invite any Town Meeting members who may have a procedural or substantive motion to contact me at any time, but certainly if you can get your motions to me by Wednesday morning, that would be helpful for our motions meeting. I have received one motion to divide the question on one of the articles. At this time, we're going to continue with our next presentation, which is Article 9A. It is one of the Community Preservation Committee articles, and it relates to land acquisition at Camp Norse. We welcome the Chair of the Community Preservation Committee, Bill Cohen. Bill?
Today, the Community Preservation Committee will be presenting its articles for Fall Town Meeting, starting with Articles 9A, B, C, and D. First, Article 9A. 9A is a recommendation for an open space acquisition. It is for approximately 99.5 acres. The land is currently owned by the Rhode Island Boy Scout Council. It is known as Camp Norse. It is out on Route 80 off of Plimpton Road on the Plymouth-Kingston Line. The Community Preservation Committee has been in discussions with the council for a number of years, looking for an opportunity to preserve this land. Not only do we want to see camping continue in Plymouth as an important component to the mission of the Boy Scout Council, but we also wanted to make sure that this area was protected. It's an area of concern for us because that's where the town has a well. It's the Dobie Well is located in this area. You might remember back to previous Town Meetings where Town Meeting has been requested to acquire land in this vicinity to protect the wellhead. And this is what this article is all about. It's all about protecting the town drinking water supply in this location. Dobie Well services West Plymouth. But there is a component of this 99 acres that makes it very conducive to passive recreational hiking trails. We would build a hiking trailhead at this location. Additional priorities for this acquisition are centered around the protecting the water supply for Plymouth residents. This is an area that has been identified as significant groundwater and surface water protection zones. In this area, we have a Zone 1 and a Zone 2 protection area, 400-foot radius around that. That is critically important to protect the area in which the well is operated. If this well was to be compromised by water quality, the town would have to abandon this location and build a well in another location. They'd have to find the land, purchase the land, and then build the well, and then hook up the town to that well. That cost could exceed a number of millions of dollars. So this investment in this area, keeping this well operational and protecting our Zone 1 and Zone 2 are priority for the town. We also have identified the area as a high-yield aquifer area, so that is important to future growth in this part of Plymouth. And again, we do see this area as a place where we can build a trailhead, and people can access the property and hike the property. But there won't be active recreational components to it. It's passive in water protection. We've been working with the Office of Marine Environmental Affairs over the years on this parcel. They have been in contact with the state and different opportunities and priorities of protecting this land. So we think this is a nice partnership between the Town of Plymouth and the Community Preservation Committee in working on not only protecting open space, but protecting water quality in our town. As you can see in this slide, the land that is in orange, outlined in orange and yellow, that is Camp Norse. The outlined orange parcels are the parcels that we're buying in Plymouth. You'll see purple parcels to the north. Those parcels are in Kingston. They're the property that used to be part of the Sisters of Divine Providence. That land has been moved into conservation. To the north there, you can see Muddy Pond. That's all in Kingston, but it's very important to have this area in close proximity of our well to be protected. Here, you can see another view of the parcels. These are the parcels that we're buying in West Plymouth that make up the 99.5 acres. That dark area there is Dobie Pond. To the left of Dobie Pond is Cranberry Boggs that have been taken out of production. The town now owns that area, and that has been restored to protect the water quality on the other side of the pond.
Thank you, and that was William Cohen. He's the Chair of the Community Preservation Committee, had to do with land acquisition for Camp Norse. Again, a reminder, on the morning of Town Meeting, Town Meeting members will be able to register with the Town Clerk outside, right outside the main entrance of Plymouth North High School. We've had some concerns raised by Town Meeting members. It's also possible for those that wish to have mask-only can then enter separately at the entrance near the Band Room. Some Town Meeting members have contacted me regarding absence due to health concerns, and they're reminded that they should also notify the Town Clerk in writing. Lunch will be served at Town Meeting, and there'll be also arrangements made for those people who wish to receive their lunch outside of the building and eat in their car. That will be possible. The Office of Public Health will provide masks and hand sanitizers and be at Town Meeting to support Town Meeting members with their health concerns. We're going to continue now with 9B, another Community Preservation Committee article. It relates to the Spire Center. We welcome back William Cohen, and he's be joined by Robert Hollis.
Next, the Community Preservation Committee will be presenting Article 9B, the Spire Center for Performing Arts. This is a historical preservation recommendation by the Community Preservation Committee to Town Meeting. And as we follow along on the PowerPoint, we can see that the building was built in 1884. In the year 2012, the Community Preservation Committee made a recommendation to Town Meeting to utilize CPC funding for the restoration of that building and for the purchasing of the building from Beth Jacob Congregation that owned the building at the time. It had been owned by the Methodist. In 2012, we acquired it with CPA funding, and then we turned it over with a 100-year lease and an option on another 100-year lease with the Greater Performing Arts Center. They've controlled the building, and they have been maintaining it and investing in that building since 2012. This recommendation is for $3.6 million. It's for the facade and additional structural work on the building. There's been a great deal of structural work done to the building. There've been elevators, ADA-compliant elevators, and bathrooms, fire suppression systems, structural analysis, and structural work done to this building since 2012. This funding will complete that work, along with focusing on the exterior of the building. You can drive by the building today and see the aluminum siding is coming to act, revealing the original surface area of the building from 1884. And that will be restored, the steeple and the siding, at $3.6 million. The Spire Center has been operating since 2012, and the benefits our community has seen has been performing each year better than the previous years. Right now, Plymouth has a meals tax in downtown Plymouth. The Spire Theater is attracting people to our restaurants, our hotels. People are staying longer, and this is benefiting the Town of Plymouth and its meals tax, obviously benefiting the Village Center in terms of the desirability of this location to live and work and do business. The arts have been shown to be a very supportive economic factor in developing our downtown. You can see here, this is the building from 1884. You can see the original facade of the building. This is a black and white photo, but we've been analyzing this with the Building Conservation Specialists. They've been looking at this photograph and studying the molding, the paint. There's been paint analysis done on the building. So you can see here, this is the motivation of this article is to return the building back to this original style from 1884. Here, you can see in a slide some of the work that has been done by the Building Conservation Specialists analyzing the facade of the building, the roof, structural and surface area restoration. This analysis has led to a cost analysis study of what this was going to cost. That information was brought to the committee. So the intent is to return the facade to its original condition. It's a $3.6 million request. The CPC wanted to accommodate the bidding process, so we voted to support that amount. We wanted to make sure that we had enough funding there because estimates in bidding is coming in higher. We wanted to make sure that we had the appropriate funding. And when this money is granted out to this entity, they will be receiving this money as services are rendered and work is completed. So any money that is not used on this project reverts back to the Community Preservation Committee. I'd like to turn the presentation over to Bob Hollis, the President of the Spire Center for Performing Arts. But before that, I'd like to run a short promo on the Spire, who they are, what they do.
The history of the Spire, it was built in 1884. It was the Methodist Church. The Methodist Church sold it to the Jewish synagogue, who used it in the '70s up until 2010, which point they weren't using enough, and that's when they approached us to buy it because they knew we were looking for a performing arts center. Our main goal right from the beginning was make this the best place to hear music anywhere. First, there's no sightline impediments, but even more so, we used an acoustic engineer right in the beginning to make sure we had a perfect reverb in here, and it was built for sound to begin with. And then we put in a tremendous sound system that's unlike many others anywhere else, too. What we've done with our lighting system is first of all, starting off with our lighting production people, Woody Bavoda, who goes back to the '60s, working with some of the big rock acts at that point, has brought in a lot of his expertise. I see a lot of in lighting today of technically people doing things proficient, but not artistically like Woody or Dodd and some of our lighting people do, because they can take all the technical improvements we've made here and put in, but really interpret it in an artistic fashion that brings it out a lot more than I normally see at other places.
The history of this place is definitely something we want to preserve. So as a nonprofit, by Gold Pass members and people supporting the arts, showing up, buying tickets, you're allowing us to continue the legacy and preserve the place for generations to come.
We're bringing in a cultural asset to this community. What it's done to the downtown center and real estate, people oftentimes cite that they would love to live downtown because they can just walk to the Spire, walk to a restaurant. What we've done for the hospitality industry has just been amazing. They're coming here to stay in the hotels, they're going to the bars, they're going to the restaurants. They're bringing a life to downtown that wasn't there before. We've done a great job inside over the last eight years. We've spent about a million dollars, but we're looking to do a $3 million preservation project on the outside that'll make this look like it was built when it was 1884. So there's been a number of benefits to the town to have the Spire Center here. Beyond that, we want to continue to increase diversity of the acts, of the audience that are coming in here. We really like to support up-and-coming acts, too, for the way we treat our fans, our audiences, and the way we treat our performers. It really creates an experience that if you went and saw the same act someplace else, it would not be the same as seeing it at the Spire Center. Thank you very much, and thank you for the video, giving you an introduction to what we've been doing at the Spire Center for the last 10 years or so. I'm really proud to be here to give you a report on what we've done since the CPC and the Town Meeting turned over the building to us and the lease and provided funding. Since that time, we had some major goals to accomplish, and since that time, we've done a couple of them. First one is the cultural goal. We bring in over 100 acts to the Spire every year with over 20,000 tickets being sold on a yearly basis. And what's interesting is that 70% of those tickets are sold to people outside of Plymouth. So they're coming in, and they're spending money downtown. They're going into lodging, they're going to restaurants, they're going to some of the bars, and it really benefits everyone downtown, which leads to my next goal, which has been that the Spire's been an economic driver for the downtown area as well, not only for the hospitality population and industry that I mentioned, but also the real estate. Realtors tell me oftentimes that just having the Spire downtown has brought more vitality, and people actually want to buy and live downtown and are able to enjoy a show and a meal and whatever. And so those two things, we've accomplished, I think, the cultural part, the economic part. But here, we have an opportunity to have a preservation of that property as well, and more of a preservation, but also a transformation, too. And so that's why we bring this article to you today. A little bit about our operations. Right now, our budget is over $700,000 a year. We employ two full-time people and seven part-time people for our productions, and we have over 25 volunteers that are involved in those productions as well. The sweat equity that's put in by the board and other volunteers, too, is well over 2,000 hours a year. I tell people all the time, we're building more than a building, we're building a community, and that's really starting to take shape as well. What we've done, we are a nonprofit, so all the net income that comes into us goes into the building, and it has been for the last eight years since we've been in operation. As a nonprofit, we've not only maintained but improved the building in the meantime. What we're asking for now is actually a total transformation beyond that. But what we do is 100% of our expenses are met by our operating income, which is amazing. We were out of business for 16 months during COVID shutdown, and we were able to have enough money set aside and also to get grants and donations from the community to keep going. And then near the end of that, we had a $450,000 grant from the shuttered venues grant from the federal government for COVID relief. So we did a great deal just to stay in business, but also to keep putting into the building. So any money that we have in excess of that, and then any money that we raise, goes back into the building. It doesn't have to support our operations. So let's look at what we've done the last eight years. I'm going to show you a slide of what we've done for fundraising, and you can refer to that, and then I'll tell you a little bit about what we've done with that money, too. You can see from that slide that we've had monies come in from the Mass Cultural Council, the Office of Travel and Tourism, the Historic Commission, the Plymouth Charitable Foundation. But during that time, we've actually also dedicated $436,000 of that operating income, net income over and above what we've had for expenses, back into the building. We've raised in total $1,356,000 during that time. Where has it gone? We've spent $1,221,000, structural enforcement, $362,000, $250,000 for an elevator and the ADA access, interior renovation for $175,000. We just completed a roof that you might see when you go by the Spire right now. That was $175,000, and so on, and so on. It adds up to $1,221,000. So your building, the town's, has been very well maintained. It's been put to great use, and so we have an opportunity now, not only to continue to do that, but to transform the appearance of downtown. And I really am calling in your support to make it a point of pride for Plymouth, and let's get behind the project. And I thank you so much.
Thank you, Robert Hollis and William Cohen. At this point, we're going to go to Nicole Manfredi. She has some questions in the chat. Nicole?
Richard Serke is asking, where will the present work end and the new work begin?
And we have on our panel Mr. Hollis, Mr. Cohen, and who would like to respond? Let's go first to William Cohen as the Chair of the Community Preservation Fund. Let's bring in Mr. Cohen, if we could. I see him as well as the panelists while we're waiting. Again, at Town Meeting, we'll be following our Parliamentary Handbook at Town Meeting Time. There are copies available at the library. Let's bring in Mr. Cohen to answer the question. And if we can't bring And if we can't bring him in, we'll bring in Robert Hollis to answer Mr. Cirque's question. And while we're bringing them in.
He's in as a panelist. Bill Cohen's in.
Bill's in. All right, Bill, go ahead and speak, Bill.
This is Bill Cohen, chairman of the CPC. I would defer to Bob Hollis. He could answer your questions about the work schedule.
All right, Bob. If we go to Bob, we can't see a video. I don't know if you could click that on, but we can hear you, Bob. Go ahead, Bob.
Sure. I'd be happy to answer that, Richard. Right now, we just finished the roof. At this point, the rest of the project is, we're waiting on the results of the town meeting because that's where the work, the new work would begin. And that would be involved in taking off the rest of the siding. We've already done the studies by taking off the siding we did. And then we've done the paint analysis, we've retained the preservationist architect, and we have the money for that work as well. So anything going forward would now be hopefully dependent upon the town meeting.
Thank you, Robert Hollis. Nicole, another question in the chat.
Two more. Jacqueline Perkins asks, I'm wondering what happens if the project costs exceed $3.6 million?
Robert Hollis, could you kind of respond?
Yes, right now, we have contingencies in there of $600,000. We've already done the roof. We have about $300,000 coming in from our cultural facilities grant we haven't received yet and some other monies we've set aside. So we have quite a contingency that goes well over $4 million. If it goes a lot more than that, then we will have to withdraw because at that point, we wouldn't have enough money to do the substantive part of the project. And that was made pretty clear at the Sleutmann's meeting as well as the FinCom, too.
Thank you, Robert Hollis. Next question, Nicole Manfredi.
Mark Posenelli is asking, how much money per year is required to be put into the endowment for future building needs?
Robert Hollis, could you respond?
Right now, the CPC has recommended 1% of our total gross. We've been doing quite a bit more than that, but that's what they have asked us to do for the least amount to go in. That's, of course, gross is a lot different than what we come up with net because half of our gross is paying our bands and performers and so forth. So that's on the level of at least $7,000 a year. And again, we were putting more, like $75,000 a year in.
Thank you. And again, town meeting members watching, you can contact Mr. Hollis, Mr. Cohen for further information and questions prior to town meeting. And we have one more question to Nicole Manfredi.
From Michael Babini, 1% of annual revenue dedicated to capital improvements is not satisfactory to maintain the building into the future. Would you consider $1 per admission ticket?
Robert Hollis, could you respond?
I, it's hard to respond to right off the top of the, you know, without being able to study it, but as I mentioned, the 1% was what was asked of us, and we've been committed to doing much more than that since that point.
Thank you. And we'll be doing a preview on Thursday, and if you have something further to add at that time, we'd be happy to hear it. Thank you. I believe that concludes the questions for this particular presentation. We're going to move on to Article 9C, and it's another Community Preservation Committee article. It's the land acquisition for Stevens Lane. Once again, we welcome back Community Preservation Committee Chair, William Cohen.
Article 9C is a recommendation by the Community Preservation Committee for an open space acquisition. This land is at the end of Stevens Lane on our waterfront, on our harbor. This Stevens Lane estuary project is a parcel of land that's approximately .64 acres, and it is appraised at $30,000. The committee wanted to see this land preserved because it not only abuts Stevens Field, but it abuts our harbor, but it is an estuary. An estuary is a salt marsh. Salt marshes are one of the most productive ecosystems that you can encounter that strengthen the water quality of your harbor. But it also is an area where water is moving through. Freshwater is moving through this area, starting up by Mount Pleasant, Whiting Street, the hollow, freshwater is making its way down under Sandwich Street, down behind the fire station, down on the backside of Stevens Field, and it makes its way to the north side of Stevens Field where this freshwater meets the saltwater. One of the reasons we want to acquire this property fee simple is that we have better control of this saltwater marsh system so we can better manage it. The salt marsh buffer does also act as a storm surge absorption area. Obviously, Stevens Field is going under restoration, and we're moving infrastructure away from the ocean. We are setting up absorption areas in this vicinity. The salt marsh, when it's working and functioning at a high level, it can add to that benefit of storm surges coming through the area. We also have noted it to be on biomaps, critical natural landscape. This is a state mapping system that identifies areas that we need to protect for its habitat. Terms are migrating through this area. This is a core habitat that we need to see protected. If the town owns the land, we have better control of this resource. At one time, Stevens Field was entirely one big salt marsh, but it had been filled in, and this is the remaining part of that area. We think this is an opportunity to help with water, freshwater moving through this part of town to the harbor. We think it's an opportunity to improve the functionality of this marsh so it better enhances the economic possibilities of our waterfront. Our waterfront sees great deal of tourism, and we find that protecting the quality of our harbor, our water quality, is essential. This is a small marsh, but it is something that we wanted to acquire to allow the town to better manage its harbor resources. Here you can see the map of the land that we're speaking of. It's outlined in purple. You can see it just north of the basketball court at Stevens Field, and you can see to the right of the slide, you can see Plymouth Harbor. You can see where this parcel touches Plymouth Harbor on the corner of it. This is the parcel, what it will look like after we acquire it. We would, if we do acquire it, we would do some additional engineering of the parcel. The parcel we've modified slightly to accommodate the entire estuary being included in this sale of the property.
Thank you. That's William Cohen. He is the chair of the Community Preservation Committee. This evening's presentation is being brought to you remotely with remote participation. We do have panelists at town meeting. As you know, currently, we only have the choice of in-person or remote participation. The hybrid that was voted in June is still at the state level. We've been told by a legislative delegation that we believe there'll be a favorable vote later this year, and we certainly hope that we'll be able to proceed with hybrid in the spring. But for the time being, I did wish to say to town meeting members, it does not prevent you from having your caucuses as a hybrid, and I urge you to consider that for all the precinct caucuses. Today, I received a call from an 85-year-old town meeting member who was concerned that her caucus is in-person on Wednesday. And so again, to all the precincts, if you can also accommodate people virtually, you're allowed to do that at the caucus level, even though the statute at the state level refers to remote participation or in-person only for the entire town meeting. At this point, we're going to go to Nicole Manfredi with a comment.
Michael Babini says, this is a natural wetland. What management is necessary? It functions naturally. The land cannot be used for anything other than that, other than the wetland that it is.
William Cohen, do you kind of respond to that comment?
I have two more.
Yes, I can, Steve. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Welcome.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. Mr. Babini, the benefit of the town owning this fee simple allows the town to actually better manage the property, that it is not functioning the way it should function. The people that own the property do not live in Plymouth, they live out of town, they can't maintain this estuary. Stevens Field was once a large estuary. It was filled in. This is the remnants. It has a very little mouth to the harbor, so for the freshwater to get out and the seawater to come in, you need to be maintaining those activities, just simply making sure that after a storm, the seaweed is away or any driftwood has piled up in this vicinity. So actually, owning the land does allow for a hands-on circumstance of just making sure that the estuary is functioning the way it should. But more importantly, when the town applies for MVB grant money, that's the Municipal Vulnerability Program. Town of Plymouth is currently a participant in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Grant Program. There's millions of dollars of grant money on Beacon Hill for towns to start planning for expected sea level rises. And in this capacity, when we apply for those grants, if we can point to a circumstance that the town has invested in, in preparation for sea level rises, that strengthens our grant application. Because obviously, if this estuary is functioning at the level it should be functioning as an absorption area during tidal surges, that is something that is a benefit to our waterfront into the park that's next to it, Stevens Field, in which we are investing money in moving our infrastructure away from the water. This estuary next to the park would only be enhancing that ability for us to better manage sea level rises in this part of the waterfront. So there's a grant benefit demonstrating with the Commonwealth that we are committed to investing our efforts in better managing the sea level rises that we're expecting in this part of Plymouth.
Thank you, William Cohen. We're going to go back to Nicole Manfredi. Two more questions, Nicole.
I don't remember if I asked this. Mark Posenelli, does the $30,000 include the additional engineering and modifications needed, or is this just the cost of acquiring the land?
William Cohen responding.
This is just to acquire the land. The CPC utilizes its administrative funds for the engineering. We do this often whenever we buy land at town meeting. The CPC uses its administrative fund to hire an engineer, to work with a town engineer, to come up with a clear understanding of the meets and bounds that we're acquiring. So that will be coming out of the administrative fund of the CPA.
Thank you, William Cohen. Again, Nicole Manfredi for the question.
Stacy De La Cruz asks, I want to know if this land will be 100% preserved and not used as parking or other uses towards the Stevens Field construction project.
William Cohen responding.
Stacy, the question is a very good question, and we will not be doing anything other than maintaining its ecological and environmental habitat. There is no intention to encroach on that in any way, shape, or form. So your answer to that is yes.
Thank you, William Cohen. And we're going to go to the fourth presentation, Article 9D, the fourth Community Preservation Committee presentation, the restoration of the Marina Building. And once again, William Cohen.
The final article is Article 9D. Article 9D is a recommendation by the Community Preservation Committee for the use of historical CPA funds for the restoration, rehabilitation of the 1857 Plymouth Foundry, or known most recently as our Plymouth Marina. As you can see in this photograph, it is a landmark building on our waterfront. On the bottom right-hand corner, you'll see the section of the building that we'll be speaking of in terms of its restoration and preservation. Initially, this is a view from Main Street Extension, looking down on Brewster Gardens in the 1880s, prior to its renovation into a park. Brewster Gardens, this is to the right, you can see there the original Plymouth Foundry. This building is the oldest building on our waterfront currently. And this is a view along Union Street, looking at the Plymouth Foundry to the right. And in backdrop, you can see Town Square and the National Pilgrim Memorial Meeting House. In the 1940s, the building was renovated as Shire Town Ford. It was renovated into a car dealership. And in the 1970s, Shire Town Ford moved to San Mashead Street, and the building just continued to be rented out. Uniquely, it hadn't changed too much in the last 70 years. You can see in this photograph from the 1950s, you can see how the car dealership sat on Water Street, and you can see behind it Brewer's Mariner. There's the mariner as it was in the 1950s. And here it is in the 1980s, when they did some modifications to the mariner for more storage of boats, more parking, and a mariner and a restaurant. So that was done in the 1980s. Today, the mariner has been expanded at different times. There've been different additions to the mariner complex, but the 1857 Plymouth Foundry has always stood there as part of this complex. Most recently, the building was purchased by Safe Harbors Marina. They own the property now. They are currently involved in a permitting process to demolish the 1857 building and rebuild it as a boat storage building. The town has determined that the permitting process around this is an as-of-right process. So currently, Safe Harbors is going through and exercising their rights as property owners at this location, seeking these permits. They did encounter one hearing with the Plymouth Historical Commission. Plymouth Historical Commission has jurisdiction over the demolition delay bylaw. It is a bylaw that is set up to protect older buildings from demolition, but all it is is a delay. The Historical Commission did enact the delay this past February, and that incentivized Safe Harbors and the neighbors who were concerned about this demolition to begin to talk. A conversation began to develop. From that, the Community Preservation Committee engaged Safe Harbors and the neighbors. The intention was to file an application with the Community Preservation Committee with the possibility of restoring the facade of this building, the exterior of this building, but also making possible interior renovations of the building to accommodate a public bathroom that would support events on our waterfront. These conversations continue. Right now, Safe Harbors continues to move through the permitting process as-of-right to take the building down and rebuild it as a boat storage facility. They wait to see what town meeting does. If town meeting votes to free up this funding for this level of work, we can begin and continue our conversations with Safe Harbors on the preservation of the facade and maybe alterations to the interior to accommodate activities on our waterfront. This is the current conditions of the building. You can see in this slide, you're looking at the building. This is the section of the building that we would be looking to preserve. That would be the facade of the 1857 Foundry, mariner facing Brewster Gardens, its cupola, its roof, its siding. On the bottom hand left, that entrance there would possibly be a place where people can come in and utilize as a public bathroom on our waterfront. At this side of our waterfront, we have no bathroom. We do have a performance shell on our waterfront, and there are many concerts and activities on that location. There are no bathrooms on this side of town. You'd have to go down to the state pier to find a bathroom. So obviously, this is something that we are looking forward to discussing with Safe Harbors in accommodating the renovations to accommodate an adaptive reuse around an area in which people can use for public events. This is what's currently proposed at the site. They plan to take the building down and build this building at about 35 feet tall. It would be utilized for boat storage. As you can see, this would be a dramatic change from what is there today, and the concern was by the neighbors that that finds some compromise on the intensity of development on the site. The neighbors and Safe Harbors began to talk, and they came up with a couple of scenarios. Right now, we're looking at the lowest scenario where the facade of the building has been preserved, and behind this building would be the storage facility for the boats. So there has been, Safe Harbors has opened up a line of discussion with the Community Preservation Committee to research this possibility. We have hired a building conservation specialist. They have analyzed the facade of the building. We have hired an independent cost estimator who has come up with an estimate on the cost of renovating the exterior and interior for the purposes that we've outlined. The exterior estimate is for $488,793. The interior restoration would be $244,408. The total cost would be $733,201 that would be utilized for the preservation of the exterior and the alterations of the interior. It's important to note that Safe Harbor has risen to the occasion. They are engaging the neighborhood, they're engaging the town. They're engaging the town and the Community Preservation Committee on the possible preservation of this building. They have an obligation to continue their permitting process, in which they are continuing. We hope that with the passage of this article freeing up these funds, we can continue a conversation with Safe Harbors about the possibility of preserving the exterior and interior of this location. Thank you for your attention, and that completes our presentation.
Thank you, William Cohen. As Nicole Minfretti mentioned earlier, we will not be using V voter. We will, however, have electronic voting. We will once again return to the remote clickers, which will be available at town meeting, and they're being overseen by Options Technologies, which is the electronic voting vendor contracted with the town. At this time, we're going to move on to Article 10. It is a zoning bylaw article. We welcome Lee Hartman, Director of Planning Development.
Two articles to present tonight, and if we can have the first PowerPoint up on the screen, please, PAC TV. And again, these are articles that we have talked about a little bit, not officially with the board, but they've been in your packet a couple times now where we've discussed things. So I'll just run through the first presentation and go through the PowerPoint. So the selectmen have adopted a goal at one of their last meetings to ensure strong and vibrant economic development and business sector. You do have handouts, too. We did give you a handout of this, so you have it. And one of the strategies of that is to develop bylaws to enhance and encourage economic development. So the first article is one that we're proposing. Right now, we have what's called a unified complex in the light industrial district, and that allows for multiple buildings by right in the district. So right now, if you want to do two buildings in other districts, you need to apply for a special permit, just to have two separate buildings. So we've used it effectively. We have very limited commercial land left in the Town of Plymouth. This has been a great way to try to get additional development in the light industrial district. It's been used on over 20 sites in the town, and again, I believe it's worked well. I've not heard of any issues related to this. And the decision of whether it's a unified complex or not is the Planning Board Through Site Plan Review. So the recommendation we have is to expand this unified complex process to the airport district, mixed commerce, highway commercial, and Cedarville Village Enterprise District. And I should note, too, you still, as you have, the ability to recommend reductions of up to 33% of parking if it's determined that the parking proposed or required through our bylaw is too intensive. And I just thought, more for other boards than this board, it was good to just kind of go through. The diagonal line you see on the map, and I wish we could use lasers, but they don't work on the TV, the diagonal point that you see there is South Meadow Road. So when we talk about the airport district, which is our second light industrial district, really the only difference between the two is that it's called airport, because it's at the airport. The vast majority of that land is the airport property itself. There is land leased in that area for other industrial, commercial development. And then on the northern side of South Meadow Road, you see there are several other properties, a couple of subdivisions. The school administration building, for example, is on the other side of that. And then that just all butts up to the Town of Carver Town Line. The other area we're talking about is mixed commerce. This is the cloverleaf you see there is the connection of the new Route 44. I say new, it's probably 15 years old. The new Route 44, as it connects with Commerce Way, so to the south of that is essentially the Colony Place Development. And then to the north of that, you see the Prestige Way, which is where Amazon is. Highway Commercial is where we have the Oasis going up in the back, behind that bulb off of Route 3. This is Exit 13, I think now, Long Pond Road. So you have the Oasis, Home Depot, and then the Shops at Five Way, and then Natalie and Holman Road, just across from Shops at Five. And that's the Highway Commercial District. And then the final one is the Cedarville Enterprise District, which is down off of Hedges Pond Road, just beyond the old Cedarville Landville. So the site plan review process is still done through the Planning Board. If you determine it's not a unified complex, or if you're not satisfied with it, then they would go through, either not go through at all, or go through the special permit process to allow for two buildings. What's really important to note here is this is only for the structures. So if there's a use that triggers a special permit, or if there's a special permit needed for overlay, such as act for protection, those are still required. This is only to allow for two buildings on a lot. And again, those other reviews are still there if they're required through the Zoning Board of Appeals. One of the things I've been asked to do as we move forward with zoning articles is present how they're consistent with our current master plan. So our current master plan encourages commercial growth and the expansion of the commercial tax-based strategies that were identified, were to maximize the value and use of existing commercial land before expanding into areas currently not zoned for commercial use, and to revise our development standards for commercial and industrial areas to increase the density and intensity of use in those areas. It also says vertical expansion, but we're not talking about that tonight. And then the final one is to encourage infill development within our established industrial parks and commercial areas. So again, without this bylaw, if you don't have 200 feet of frontage on a road and an acre of land, you can't put a building on. So it is... It's proven to be a great tool in light industrial district, and we're recommending it be added to these other districts. So some examples. This says Christian McCullough Boulevard, but it's actually the industrial park road. I just gave a little insert of a photo down below to kind of see where this is. This is a daycare facility, and that is the medical building up on the hill at the corner of Industrial Park Road and Resnick Road. Looking at the White Bill or either of those buildings directly across the street is the Chick-fil-A Little Park Commercial Development. This one is one I think we're all familiar with. It's the Registry of Deeds. So the building on the top right is the Registry of Deeds, Registry of Motor Vehicles. And so then there's a MAP Academy in the rear, and then a couple of other commercial buildings that we were able to work through with the multiple buildings on a lot. This one is, this Plimpton Road is on the left. You would be coming from Plymouth Center, taking a right onto Commerce Way, or if you were at Market Basset, you'd be going directly across that intersection onto Commerce Way. And these are the two medical buildings that you see on the right-hand side of Commerce Way. There's a third pad there. That was one that wasn't developed for this plan. It's one that you saw actually as a storage facility. This is another one. This is, I refer to it as the Bartlett Nuclear Building. So again, if you look in the bottom left, there are two buildings using unified complex. They were able to put those buildings on separate lots. And then also, there's a fairly large expansion that was done in the rear of the second lot. And then the final one, I believe it's the final one I have, is 45 Resnick Road, which is again, medical building up on the hill. And then we have 41 Resnick Road, which is the new medical building that was built, again, as a unified complex. So good tools. And again, just again, to show you the highlight of what we're doing, and we would look for your support tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. That was Lee Hartman. He's the Director of Planning Development. Presentation on Article 10 in the Fall Annual Town Meeting that'll occur on Saturday, October 15th at 8:00 AM at Plymouth North High School. If you have further need to contact the moderator, you can email me at fst@plimmethlaw.com. You can call me at 508-746-1464. And at this time, we'll once again welcome back Lee Hartman, who will...
Do I have questions?
But before we do that, we have Nicole Minfretti with a question from the chat. Nicole.
Okay, from Donald Williams. The Master Plan Committee has heard that there is a need for larger buildings so that successful businesses and small buildings can expand and stay in Plymouth. How is this idea consistent with that?
And I'm looking at the panel, and I don't see Lee Hartman. So unless there's anyone else from the staff who would care to be heard in connection with that, Derek Brindisi is here with us this evening. He is the Town Manager. Welcome, Mr. Brindisi.
Good evening, everybody. I know Lee Hartman is trying to log in. He's been texting me, he's having struggles again, so hopefully he'll be here in the next couple minutes. But I think many of our town meeting members know that the Planning Board has just begun the master planning process itself. So they're in the process of updating the master plan, which I think is over almost 10 years old now. So I would imagine, and really guess that he can expand upon that, that what is being proposed with these two bylaws will be consistent with the updated master plan.
Thank you, Derek Brindisi, Town Manager. We're getting comments. This is not an opportunity to really debate articles. It's really just presentations and questions for information. I'm going to go back to Nicole Minfretti for another question. Nicole.
Stacy De La Cruz asks, will these color presentations be available to town meeting members for reference via the town meeting section of the town website?
I can't answer that. I can tell you, Stacy, that they are going to be available at pacTV.org/plymouth-town-meeting. So they will be available.
Yeah, Mr. Moderator, we're happy to upload these presentations by Lee Hartman onto the town website. That's easy.
Thank you. And Nicole.
Wayne Gerhard asks, how will traffic considerations be taken into consideration in these decisions? Many of the areas involved are already impacted by increased traffic. More development will only increase this.
Town Manager Derek Brindisi, do you care to respond?
Yeah, that's a more complex question that I definitely would want to refer to Lee Hartman on. Him and his team have done this analysis. So hopefully, he can join us in the next couple minutes, and he can answer that in more detail.
Thank you. And if he doesn't, Stacy and Wayne, we'll have the preview on Thursday. And on Thursday, Lee Hartman can respond to these questions, or perhaps we'll have someone from staff be able to respond at that time. So that'll be the town meeting preview on Thursday. It'll be at the Great Hall. There'll be a panel. It'll be at 6:00 PM. And at this time, we're going to go back for Article 11, another zoning bylaw. And once again, we welcome back Lee Hartman on video. Lee.
...through the whole presentation, but we, as you know, a special permit is a fairly intensive process. It takes two to five to five-plus meetings to go through. When you look at that, it's a review by the Planning Board, oftentimes steering committees, sometimes two steering committees, and then public hearing before the Zoning Board of Appeals. So each one of those meetings, an applicant shows up with legal, engineering, landscape architect, and an architect. And depending on the project, there are other professions, wetlands, surveyors, traffic engineers who show up. I was asked by the former chair to give me some idea of what some of the costs are. So I asked some of the people who come before these boards fairly regularly, not the cost to prepare the plans, because those plans have to be prepared anyway to get your building permit, but what they think the cost is to go through the special permit process. So an average project, I'm told, is between $50,000 and $75,000 in cost for those professions you saw. It's preparing the documents, it's getting ready for the meetings, attending those meetings, and any kind of follow-up from those meetings. Larger projects can run between $10,000 and $30,000 for legal. $100,000 has occurred in this town for more complicated cases. Engineering is $40,000 to $100,000, and $200,000 in more complicated cases. And I think my impression is most developers wouldn't have an issue with that if that was their development cost. These are the costs you have to put in just to find out whether or not you have a project or not. So it is a major deterrent to smaller projects occurring. The use table that we have and what we're presenting tonight are really uses that already exist in almost all, in all the cases that you'll see in my presentation. It's a kind of a quirk of the old bylaw versus a new bylaw, why some of these just don't fit when you look at it in the use table. And again, these are lower-impact uses that, in my opinion, don't really require any special conditioning that you would typically have through the special permit process. And I just, important to note, it's not for retail. Retail is a high-traffic user, and it's not something that we would ever look at to say that should be an allowed use. And I just put this up to show you. So this is the old zoning bylaw we had. And when you went into the R-20 district, this is the example I put together, it says you can do all uses allowed in the R-40 district and all uses by special permit in the R-25 district. So now, in the old bylaw, you would then have to go to that other section and say, now what can I do? Oh, here's my allowed uses. Oh, but wait, now I have to go back to the R-40 to see what's allowed in the R-20 district, and I have to go back to the R-40 to see what's allowed by special permit. And then I go to my R-40 district, and it says, oh, now you've got to go back to the RR. So in some cases, you're chasing back to try to figure out what's an allowed use in a zone, going back two, three, four, or five zones by cross-reference, just the way the old bylaw was written. And what we've done is come up with a table. As we've worked with this table, we see that some of these things just clearly don't make sense. There are a few of these that are not quite in that category, but most of these are the ones, in my opinion, just don't make sense. So boat sales prohibited in the airport district. We have boat sales all over the airport district. So why in this table it says it's prohibited, it makes no sense to me. We have a few of these marine-related uses. We have 37 miles of coastline, 365 ponds. We're a marine community. And I should point out, when it says prohibited, there's no variance, there's no process to do, period, you can't do it. So again, if you go to the airport zone and look at it, those uses are already there. So it's a use, again, we'd like to convert from prohibited to an allowed use in the airport. Banks. Banks are prohibited in the arterial commercial. They do have the area, this is essentially Pilgrim Hill Road and the Stop &amp; Shop Plaza. They're already there. Why they're prohibited in arterial commercial? I can do high-intensity uses, but I can't do a bank. Right now, a bank is a special permit in the light industrial district. Again, it's a low-intensity use. It's a great alternative to 40Bs or other things that you might see popping up in our light industrial district. It's prohibited in the airport, and I think there's at least one bank in the airport. Doesn't make any sense to have it as a prohibited use. And it's a special permit in mixed commerce, which is the Colony Place area. And again, it's a low-intensity use, and one that I think is a great one to encourage as an alternative to other things that we've seen. And again, if it's retail, it would still trigger a special permit in that district. This is the light, this is the mixed commerce district, I'm sorry, arterial commercial. So the cross street you see there is Sammerson Street, or if you want to say, Sammason. And to the north there, where the red area bulges out, that's the Stop &amp; Shop Plaza. To the south, you have the strip along Sammerson Street, and then the old Kmart Shaw's Plaza, and then across the street is the Colonial Ford. And I should also point out, Bank of America is at the Stop &amp; Shop Plaza, and Rockland Trust is already in at the Pilgrim Hill Road. Our two airport, our two main industrial parks, so we have the North Plymouth Industrial Park, and as well as some land just south of Prestige Way, which is the WPLM land. That's our industrial land to the north. And to the south, you have the area parallel to Route 3, which is really the prison and the state property. So the majority of the area on Long Pond Road is Camelot Drive. Marine yards, again, as a marine community, they're prohibited, not allowed in any way in the airport or the light industrial district. So looking to make those allowed uses. Non-automotive, so again, non-automotive. Now, this is one, again, we see non-repair facilities in both the industrial park and the airport all over already. So this is one we're recommending not to go to an allowed use, because it's a little more intensive, but to a special permit use. So those are prohibited now in the airport district and light industrial, and going from prohibited to special permit, they're already all over both of those districts. Aviation-related, it's prohibited in light industrial. So this would be any kind of aviation service-type uses. It's allowed as an allowed use in the airport. It should be allowed in the light industrial district, too. Heavy equipment sales and services, again, something that's out there. Looking to convert that from special permit to an allowed use in both those districts. Light industry, again, Commerce Way, it's prohibited. So looking to make it an allowed use in mixed commerce. And I just gave the definition of what that is. Fabrication process, packaging, or assembly employing only electric or other substantially noiseless and inoffensive power done internally. And so again, that's not a use you could do in mixed commerce, just looking to expand the types of uses that you might see there. Manufacturing, and this is not creating a solar field or a wind facility, this is manufacturing the parts. So the manufacturing of renewable, ultimate energy uses, it's allowed in every other commercial district except for the highway commercial. So we're looking to make that from prohibited to allowed like it is in all the other districts. So we're looking to make that from prohibited to allowed like it is in all the other districts. And again, with our current master plan, and I won't repeat these, they're essentially the same, but these are the same goals that the master plan has that we're looking to achieve by doing this. And that's the table, again, with the changes that we're recommending. Thank you.
That's Lee Hartman. He's Director of Planning and Development. We now welcome Lee to our panelists. And Lee, we have questions. Nicole will repeat them for you again so you can respond. Nicole?
Don Williams asked, master plan committee has heard that there is a need for larger buildings so that successful businesses and small buildings can expand and stay in Plymouth. How is this idea consistent with that?
Lee Hartman?
Thank you. Lee Hartman, Director of Planning and Development for the town. So the master plan itself, and you can see in the presentation that was just presented, that the master plan that we have recognizes that we have a very limited amount of commercial land left in the town, and that using that land to the best of our ability is what makes the most sense as far as the master plan. So again, I think it's totally consistent with our current master plan. We have very few acreages left of land for commercial development. So the first article, Article 10, really allows us to be as flexible as possible to allow for additional development. And also, I would point out that it just allows for flexibility. It does not allow for any more intensive use of the property. It's just a little more flexible. So you could have a 40,000-square-foot building under the current laws. This would allow for 20,000 square-foot buildings, still the same intensity, just more flexibility.
Thank you, Nicole Manfredi. Next question.
Wayne Gerhard asks, how will traffic considerations be taken into consideration in these decisions? Many of the areas involved are already impacted by increased traffic. More development will only increase this.
And that's the balance we have to take as a town, because we could say no and just admit that we're a bedroom community, and that 100% of, well, not 100%, but the majority of the tax revenue that comes from the town is and will come from residential homes. Again, what I think we're doing here in both articles is not necessarily increasing the intensity of development that could happen. We're just trying to make for more flexibility. So yes, there may be, or hopefully there is, additional traffic that is created, because that means that we're being successful with economic development. I would also point out that by not doing this doesn't necessarily mean that nothing will happen. As we've seen already in Plymouth, we have two 40Bs that have come into the community. I can tell you that in a lot of this commercial land, 40Bs are being discussed on several vacant pieces of property. So I look at this as an option to do something that has a positive tax base for the town, creates jobs. And again, by not doing it, doesn't necessarily mean we'll have less traffic. I think it just means that if a property owner can't figure out what they could do commercially, that they'll probably do, like we've seen now twice in Plymouth, seeking to do high-density residential development instead.
Thank you. And that's Lee Hartman. He's Director of Planning and Development on the zoning bylaw articles at this time. We're going to move to, and we're going to go back to Nicole for another question.
From Robert Pazmino, what additional revenue is anticipated from proposed changes?
Lee Hartman?
That's very difficult to anticipate without a crystal ball, but I can tell you that the, doing the flexible, having multiple buildings on a lot has generated a lot of interest. I've had several property owners talk to me about being able to have that flexibility. To try to put a number to it would be impossible. But again, I think, again, whether it's another bank or a couple more banks in the community, or some of those uses in Article 11, that, that again, can't happen now because they're prohibited, or for the flexibility of having multiple buildings on a property, there is interest, but to put a number on that would be impossible.
Thank you, Lee Hartman, Director of Planning and Development. We're going to move to Article 16. It's the plastic bag change article, and we welcome Deborah Iaquinto on video.
My name is Deb Iaquinto, and I'm a member of the Open Space Committee, which is sponsoring Article 16 to amend Plymouth's plastic bag ban bylaw. The intent of this article is to update the definition of what constitutes a reusable Plymouth implemented a plastic bag ban six years ago, and we have had great success. There are far fewer plastic bags littering the town, and far more people bringing their own reusable bags to shop in our stores. It's been a true win-win for the environment and for our town. The current bylaw defines a reusable bag as one that's at least 3 milliliters thick. It's designed specifically for multiple uses, and it has handles. You can buy these bags for $0.10 when you check out of many local stores like Market Basket and Stop &amp; Shop. And even though the cost is relatively low, it's been a great motivation for residents to bring their own bag. Now, when most of us shop, we either pack our purchases in our own reusable bag, or use the recyclable paper bags that most businesses offer for free. So what's the big deal? Why change? Well, Plymouth was one of the first South Shore towns to pass a plastic bag ban in 2016, and the definition has evolved as more towns gain more experience with the ban. Our definition no longer reflects best practice and is having an unintended consequence. Several chain stores are now distributing thicker plastic bags, like the one shown in this slide, free of charge. The concern is that other stores may follow suit, and we'll soon find ourselves right back at square one, with plastic bags littering our community and causing environmental harm. The recommendation we're making with Article 16 is to adopt the best-practice definition of reusable bag. This will bring our bylaw up to date, and will help minimize the risk of Plymouth losing the environmental gains we've made with our plastic bag ban. The updated definition calls for a bag that is a little thicker, four milliliters instead of three. The bag itself is sewn, and it has sewn handles, not heat-fused, and it's designed specifically to be used multiple times. The bag can be washed or disinfected, and it will be made of natural fiber or durable, non-toxic plastic, very similar, again, to the bags that you see in the slide, and probably very similar to the reusable bags you may have at home. We're asking for your support of Article 16 to bring Plymouth's bylaw up to date and to help maintain the environmental improvements we've seen since the bylaw was first passed. The transition will be seamless for our residents, many of whom are already using these bags. And businesses will have six months to comply with the change. And since many of them are already in compliance, the transition will be seamless for them as well. Another plus is that there's no additional cost associated with implementing this change. In fact, the Public Health Department is already charged with monitoring the compliance with the ban, and so there's no additional burden on their staff either. So on behalf of the Open Space Committee, I thank you all for considering Article 16. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's Deborah Iaquinto from the Open Space Committee on the article. This evening's live presentation on October 3rd of presentation night will be replayed on Wednesday, October 5th at 7:00 p.m. and 9:30 p.m. on Comcast 15, Verizon 47, and there'll be more replay showtimes to be announced. At this time, we're going to go to Article 22, is the citizen's petition, and we welcome, as our panelist, Richard Cirque. Welcome, Mr. Cirque. Good evening. We can see you.
Okay. At the request of Catherine Holmes, who was the proponent of this article but who cannot be present tonight, I am here to explain Article 22. Plymouth County owns a 105-acre parcel of land located off the east side of Long Pond Road and the south side of Camelot Drive, commonly known as the Woodlot. The county commissioners have entered into a lease of the Woodlot, having a potential term of 73 acres with Boston South. Boston South wants to build a horse racing track on the Woodlot. In a non-binding referendum vote at the town election on May 21, 82% of the voters indicated that they are not in favor of a gambling facility or a horse racing track on the Woodlot. Under current state law, there can be no horsing without the approval of the select board. On June 8, the select board voted unanimously not to support a gambling facility or a horse racing track in Plymouth. But state law could change, and a future select board may think differently. The Home Rule Bill, that's the focus of Article 22, would, in addition to requiring approval by the select board, require the approval of both town meeting and town voters for any location proposed to be used for horse racing. Finally, under current state law, no horse track can be located on property owned by the county. But again, state law may change. Passage of Article 22 will give a clear message to the legislature and the gaming commission that the citizens of Plymouth demand local control on horse racing in our town. It could be described as a, quote, "belt and suspenders," unquote, provision, making sure in every possible way that the use you don't want to have doesn't occur. Thank you.
Richard Cirque, he is a town meeting member here this evening on behalf of petitioner Catherine Holmes. She'll be invited to join us at the town meeting preview on Thursday. That will be on Thursday, October 5th at 6:00 p.m. It'll be in person at the Great Hall. There'll be a podium for people to ask questions. It'll also be cable cast live on PACT TV. I will be joined at the Great Hall with Nicole Manfredi, Assistant Town Moderator, also Kevin Canty. The Chair of the Advisory and Finance Committee will articulate the votes by the Advisory and Finance Committee and the rationale for their votes. Will also be joined by members of the staff this evening. I'd like to thank people who are here in studio with me, Nicole Manfredi, the Assistant Town Moderator, Julie Thompson, the Executive Director of PACT TV. She's joined by Mark McKinley, David Antoine, Keith Hughes. And we express our appreciation for the entire PACT TV staff. Thanks to all of the presenters this evening. Thanks to the panelists. And again, town meeting is scheduled for Saturday, October 15th, in person at Plymouth North High School at 8:00 a.m. I'm Steve Shafletti, Plymouth Town Moderator. Good evening.